Yes, great.
Easy enough.
Counselor Demont.
Michelle?
Yes.
With the code saying forty-five days, then when do we actually, what's our deadline? I'm sure they're probably different. What's the soonest deadline?
So what we're eyeing is July twenty-third to fill these. That would pretty much be right at the forty-five for our first resignation, which I believe was the chair of planning. That, I mean, that is like right on.
We should be on schedule.
Mm-hmm. So I will probably be coming back to you. I'm not sure if I'll be able to hit next week, but...
And July second, recall that there is not a meeting on the second.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we've blocked that for the fifth Monday.
So it seems like we want then an executive session today, given that we're all soundness. If...
Anything else, Ms. Parker?
The one thing I could do, though, is start to contact some of these people. If you have any interest in discussing any of the members from the 2018 pool, I could certainly start contacting them now. Or if you'd like them to all be contacted at the same time, we could wait.
It might be good to wait, yeah. So we don't get... So, yeah, go ahead. Besides, we have three minutes. All right, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say this is such a difficult process, and I just want to say thank you. I like the intentionality and group's effort to doing this. And then the second thing, I just don't know what type of work is involved with this. But my question earlier today really made me think for transparency, since these are commissions and boards that are representing the city and also making recommendations to council. Perhaps we should save their CVs so that we can articulate who we have serving and why we felt they were qualified. Um, I just think for transparency for our public, it's a good...
Well, we have, I mean, moving forward, since I've gotten here, that's absolutely the intention.
Okay, okay.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
Sometimes you have ideas, and you're like, "Yeah, that is only five hundred extra hours of work." So I...
Absolutely. Good. We'll do.
One point of clarification is that if, for example, by the time we get this back before council, I would think we already have the full resignation of the other agents.
We do have it.
Oh, we do have it now?
Yes, actually, he submitted it, I believe, either last Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, never mind.
I just opened an email today, but I did see that it was submitted last week.
Okay, then never mind.
Yeah, and it was, it was an informal email, but I did, I did see it today. Yep.
Perfect, so it's...
Okay.
So it's six fifty-eight, and we're going to close the meeting. If you guys, one, we could go straight over there and...
We can stop the meeting.
Look, guys. I don't mean to toot my own horn, but I think this is more effective.
Just get it done.
When women... Ready?
Okay, hello, welcome, everybody, to the June eleventh council meeting. Uh, the mayor is absent and excused tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting for the day. If you could please raise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. There's flags on both sides. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City clerk, if you would please take the roll call.
Atchison.
Absent and excused.
Byrd, here. DeCamara.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
So let's move to consideration of the minutes. Do I have a motion? Okay. Counselor Byrd?
Yes, I move that the city council approve the minutes of the meeting of May twenty-first, 2018, as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This will be a voice vote. Ms. Parker? Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get there.
Okay, so we have no presentations at this time, so now we're going to open it for citizen communication. This time is reserved for comments on any issue or items pertaining to city business. Those for which a promo, formal public hearing scheduled, please reserve that for that time. Tonight, we have a public meeting and a public hearing. If you're here for that, please make sure you sign up in the back and save your time for that. Otherwise, please, um, Ms. Parker's going to get the sheet and come forward and state your remarks.
Uh, hi, my name's Rich Chamberlain.
One second, Rich, Mr. Chamberlain. Sorry, I think Ms. Parker needs to... It's okay? Mr. Chamberlain, go ahead. My apologies. Please state your name.
No worries, thank you. My name's Rich Chamberlain. I've been a resident of Westminster for about thirty-two years, depending on what my wife tells me, uh, for the day. I just wanted to, uh, thank you. Last week at the study session, you're continuing to look at the possibility of a legal aid clinic. Westminster is a perfect central location between Adams County and Jefferson County. And it, that would go a small way towards evening the pla... Pardon me. Evening the playing field for, uh, folks who are sometimes victimized, uh, in, in, in our system. And I also realize that there are some who want an even playing field. And I appreciate your courage in understanding that and, and facing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Ms. Parker, do we have anybody else signed up? Anybody else that wishes to speak? Please state your name clearly, and if you haven't signed in, make sure you sign in before you leave.
Si, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gloria. Buenas tardes a todos. Estoy aquí para decirles que soy miembro de UNE y para darles las gracias por su gran apoyo que están dando para la Clínica Legal.
Good evening. My name is Gloria, and I'm here tonight with UNE, and I'm here to give thanks for your support so far on the Legal Aid Clinic. And my name is Laurel Hayden, and I will be translating.
Estamos muy, muy agradecidos porque sabemos que van a ser dos puntos para beneficio de nuestra comunidad, y eso nos da muchísima alegría, y le queremos dar las gracias a todos y cada uno de ustedes por su gran esfuerzo que están haciendo. Y pues nuevamente, gracias.
And we would, uh, like to give thanks and our appreciation, especially that there will be two locations for the Legal Aid Clinic. We're very grateful for that, and we appreciate the work that went into that. An overall thank you.
Y aquí les presento una carta con mucho gusto para, pues, agradecerles nuevamente ahorita y siempre. Muchas gracias.
And right here, we have a letter that we'd like to present to you, just in support of the Legal Aid Clinic that we'll pass out, and you can read.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from any other citizens? Okay. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Jeremy Rodriguez, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Ed Perlmutter's office. I wanted to give you guys a brief update about what we're up to, or what Ed's up to in Washington, DC. So bear with me real quick before I, so I can pull out my notes. Uh, so first off, I wanted to let everybody know, remind everybody what, um, committee's Congressman Perlmutter serves on. One, Financial Services Committee, and two, the Science, Space and Technology Committee. Congressman Perlmutter is the lead Democrat on the Terror, Terrorism and Illicit Finance Subcommittee. And right now in that committee, there, he is working on marijuana banking. Marijuana banking is, you know, kind of an issue right now. The, they don't, uh, legitimate marijuana businesses don't have access to the banking system. And, uh, is, he's been working on a long, a long time to get rectified. In the Science, Space and Technology Committee, he is, uh, working on getting, uh, our space program to Mars in 2033. He's kind of a science nut, and would love to explain that to anybody who's willing to listen. So please do, if you see him. Also, space weather is kind of a big issue in event of, uh, solar radiation from the sun could have a big disruption within our electric grid and have, um, um, issues with planes flying over the Arctic. But there's also another issues to that as well. Some of the priorities that he's working on in Congress right now is, uh, to finish the VA hospital in Aurora. It's opening this summer, and it's, uh, hopefully without any further ado. Fuel syst, helicopter fuel systems, this is a big issue with helicopters and where their fuel is located in the event of a crash. Been working on that for a while. Healthcare price transparency and ensuring Mueller is, investigation is allowed to reach its natural conclusion without political influence. He's, uh, you know, working hard to make sure Colorado's economy works for everyone and addressing the squeeze on growing economy that many Coloradoans are feeling, on our roads and infrastructure, student loans and whatnot. And last but not least, DACA. Last year, President Trump decided to end the DACA program, which allowed young people that were brought here to the US and excel, uh, except for their citizenship and being torn apart from their family and advocating for a legislative solution that has gotten us for so many years. That is it. We have a few events coming up in the near future. One of them is a Telephone Town Hall. Please look at our website on the Events page to make sure that you can participate in any one of our upcoming events coming soon. I don't have any dates for you right now, but our website will. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to take those. Otherwise, that is all I have to say. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Are there any other, any other comments from citizens in the audience? Okay, with that, um, today we have Ms. Obi, serving as acting city manager. Do you have any comments?
No, Madam Chair, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any reports or comments from city council? Ms. Counselor Demott?
Yeah, I was approached by a veteran in, in the gym this last week, and he was telling me about an event he asked if I would share. The event is to bring awareness to veteran suicide. It's a motorcycle ride called Ride Twenty-Two to designate the twenty-two veterans we lose a day to suicide. It is on June thirtieth, from eight AM to four PM. It's a hundred-and-fifty-mile ride. It's twenty-two dollars to enter, and eleven dollars if you have a passenger. You can check this event out at victoryforveterans.org/ride22.
Thank you, Counselor Demott. Are there any other ques, any other comments from council? I just want to take this moment to thank the members from the We Organize Westminster to Mr. Chamberlain and Señora Gloria for being here and providing your comments. This is an initiative that was recommended through the Affordable Housing Task Force and one that Counselor Pinter has been a strong champion and really bringing different, um, regional partners to the table and something that this council is very proud to be supporting. So we are also very excited to see the progress on this matter, and we thank you all for bringing this issue to us and for continuously educating us on it. Okay, so the consent agenda, we're going to move to the consent agenda. This is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. No members of council requested to remove an item. Do I have a motion? Counselors Colley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem. I move to, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, items eight A through eight B.
Do I have a second, Counselor Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This will be a vote with your button. Okay, we have six yes. And one, one member of council is not present. Okay, so we're going to move to appointments and resignations. Do I have a motion? Counselor Byrd?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number Seventeen, appointing current alternate boards and commissions members to full membership to fill vacancies on the Human Services Board, Inclusivity Board, and Planning Commission, respectively.
Counselor Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is going to be a roll call. Ms. Parker?
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCamara?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Great, we have five yes and one member of council not present. Okay, now we have it correct. So we have six yes and one not present. So now we're going to move to the public hearing and other new business. Item ten A, it's a public meeting on the 2019-2020 budget. Do I have a motion?
To open the public...
Yeah, to open the...
Madam Mayor Protem, I move to open the hearing.
Counselors Colley?
My second.
Okay, the public meeting is now open. If you wish to, any members of the audience that wish to come and provide any feedback or comment related to our 2019-2020 budget, please make sure that you sign up in the back and come forward and state your comments.
Madam Mayor Protem and counselors, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Ellen Buckley, and as most of you know, I'm the chair of the Environmental Advisory Board. And our mission includes advising you and making recommendation, recommendations to you on matters pertaining to storm quality, among other things. And that's why I'm here tonight. The city is subject to requirements in a state-administered federally mandated National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. And currently, the city's not in compliance with this permit, as was shown by an audit that was done for the city in the end of 2016. So we are here tonight, the whole board, to recommend that council support the Stormwater Program's request to approve revisions to their operating budget and slightly decrease the capital budget. And what this will allow is for four full-time employees to be hired. And currently, you have two contract workers who are inspecting mainly construction sites to check for compliance with stormwater discharge. And by hiring the two full-time employees and also two more, one would be a supervisor of the program, and another would be an analyst, that actually is going to result in quite a cost savings to the city. So it would also provide for the purchase of three trucks for the group. So the EAB, we're very excited to be going to be assisting the Stormwater Program in stepping up their compliance with the permit. And we also support, they have a current strategy right now. They've been focusing on enforcement with construction sites, because those are sort of the biggest violators of stormwater discharge issues. And, but also, they, we obviously, as a city, need to increase enforcement and education to other businesses who, um, can affect stormwater and also residences, so they don't like blow their leaves into the stormwater on the street or pour gas in it. It's even worse. So, um, you can't really increase compliance and enforcement without increased staff. It just, it just isn't possible. And this isn't increasing, um, taxes or fees on anyone. It's just, it's just shifting existing money. So that's, that's very attractive as well. So the reasons we support the request are we're very concerned with the lack of compliance. That can have horrible consequences for the city. And also, obviously, we are very concerned with the effect noncompliance has on the environment, because any stormwater eventually ends up in the South Platte. And if we're polluting that by not complying with our permit, we're, we're affecting, you know, a huge amount of environment and other folks. So the compliance with the permit really needs to be a priority for the city for those reasons, and also because you should walk the talk of your strategic plan. And you say we're an environmentally responsible city, so that requires you to provide the resources necessary to actually comply with the stormwater permit and be environmentally responsible. And I know you want to. So on behalf of the EAB, we recommend that when stormwater folks come before you and they, that you support their budget requests, what they've requested to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Ms. Parker, do you need the remarks or not? Because they're on record.
Well, they're not formal, but you could, if you want it, you can have it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Buckley. I also have, um, Ms., sorry.
Are you done?
Yeah, thank you very much. I also have Mr. Stimson signed up to speak. Are you here to speak on this matter? On the budget, or are you here to speak on? Okay, go ahead. And please state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Chris Stimson, living in the Cotton Creek area of Westminster. Mayor Protem, uh, city council. The comments I'd really want to make really should be addressed at, probably at state level, but I haven't been invited to speak on their budget, so I guess I'll try this one instead. Yeah, my, my concerns largely are those that are very well addressed by other countries and which we tend to pay lip service to here, and, uh, and that is, uh, addressing climate change through various means, including renewable energy use. Now, I know in Westminster, we do have some community solar. I also understand that in the new downtown, developers are being encouraged to involve themselves in the Commercial Pace Program so that they can have, um, you know, energy efficiency and renewable energy on, on the roofs of their building, on their buildings. I would call for whatever is appropriate in the, the upcoming budget to be devoted to some of these measures. Probably at city level, the, the, um, uh, the most appropriate would be expanding the community solar program or, or anything that, uh, addresses the climate change issue through the use of energy efficiency and clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stimson. Are there any other members of the audience that wish to come forward and speak on this matter? No, so that closes our public meeting. We're going to move forward to item ten B. Our next item ten B is a public hearing. So if you're here to speak in favor or against, please make sure to sign the sheet in the back to enter it into the record. We have no presentations at this time, and no one has signed up. Is there anyone here that hasn't signed up that would like to come forward and speak? Are there any questions or comments from council on this matter?
I'm sorry, I thought you...
Counselor Sykes?
Yes, um, Counselor Byrd brought up earlier, and I think it's a really good question. If we could have staff come up and talk about how we have, um, increased the funds that have gone into the home repair program and talk a little bit about that program?
Thank you, Counselor Sykes. Ms. Grafton?
Molly?
And Ms. Tare.
Tare.
Hi, it's Molly Tare. I'm the housing coordinator. And the question again, Counselor Sykes? I was watching a moth precede us up the...
Counselor Byrd?
Yeah, I think a few of us had this question. So we were just wondering if you would please just talk to us about some historical usage of these emergency home repair funds? How it's been used, why it's a community value, and how expanding an allocation of CDBG dollars for this use fits with our strategic plan and serving our citizens?
You bet. Thank you so much for the question. And I'll do the best I can. I may have to call on my lifelines here as a new employee. But the fund was set up some ago, and it originally was funded through, I believe, Home?
Correct.
Yeah, it was another, another branch of our HUD funding. And it became a little bit cumbersome, because for a five-thousand-dollar emergency home repair, people had to do a lot of paperwork and accounting work to be, um, reporting to HUD. But we have kept it going, and the money is primarily used by people who qualify, oftentimes seniors and low-income individuals and families who want to, a, a stay in place, take care of a property that needs work. And so it's oftentimes used for furnaces, hot water heaters, um, major repairs to bathrooms to make them adapted. And, um, it's very, very valued in our community. We had our meeting on April nineteenth at the MAC to talk about CDBG with the residents, and a couple of people came in, one of whom who had had one of the grants, and she was effusive about how wonderful it was, the quality of the work, how easy. So it is a program that gives back to us mightily. And so we believe that ninety thousand is about the right level, and we can look at it again if need be. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from council? No? Counselor? No, no. Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And for those of you in the audience that haven't met, Ms. Tare, she's the newest addition to our Economic Development Department. She's our housing coordinator, and we're so excited to have her here in our city. Thank you very much. Okay, since we have no other public comments on this, we're now going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move forward to item ten C, which is first reading of Counselor's Bill Number Twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Or do we want to first do, move to approve the allocation? Um, item B two?
Yes. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen. Let me move here. Okay. Counselor Sykes, would you like to move that?
I would like to move to approve the allocation of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act funds as set forth in this Agenda memorandum for the 2018 program year and authorize staff to submit the 2018 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development incorporating such allocations.
Counselor Byrd?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is going to be a roll call.
Will you comment first?
Sorry, do you have any comments?
I do. Yes, so I, I'd just like to call the public's attention to, to the use of these funds. I think our staff did a really nice job talking about why this money is so important and how it fits with our strategic plan for our city. One of these is helping our, our aging citizens to age in place and make their homes more, more accommodating of changed physical circumstances so they can use these dollars to make improvements so that they can stay in their home. A lot of times, our senior population lives on a fixed or reduced income. So, um, replacing a hot water heater or a furnace is something that would not be possible for them but for the fact that these funds are available. Another piece I'd like to highlight for our public is that these funds, and this is also described in our Agenda memo, that these funds also help our city preserve a valuable source of affordable housing. source of affordable housing. So a lot of the homes that these funds are used to repair and upkeep are, are homes that are, that people can afford to live in. And that's something that we know is an issue of crisis proportions right now in the whole Denver metro area. Not enough people can afford to put a roof over their head. So these funds go a long way in accommodating that and taking care of some citizens who, who need that hand up and an opportunity to stay in their home. So I'm happy to be voting to approve this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Bird. Do we have any other comments from Council? Counselor Demont?
I, I want to highlight also why I am in favor of this, and it's around the seniors like Counselor Bird spoke of. In my mind, seniors, that's a, a part of the demographic that a lot of times are on fixed incomes, and this really helps them. And I think that a good community that's civilized does take care of its seniors. So I love that about this program, and I'm happy to vote yes on it.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. Counselor Sykes?
I just wanted to really quickly highlight for anyone who might be having confusion or heartburn when they saw that we're joining the Adams County Consortium for our home dollars. But that doesn't mean that Jefferson County does not benefit from the home program. As a city, we can only choose to be in one consortium. However, developers, and in fact, at our downtown, have benefited in Jefferson County from home dollars too. The application goes directly through the developer at that point. So just wanted to make sure people didn't think we were focusing on one portion of our city over another.
Are there any other comments from Council? Okay, so this will be a vote with your button? Okay, so we have six yes and one member of Council not present. So we're going to move to Item 10C. Do I have a motion to pass Counselor's Bill, Bill Number 23? Ms. Parker, here one second, sorry. Okay, Counselor Bird?
I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 23 on First Reading, Authorizing the Vacation of the 0.3-acre right-of-way along the southern boundary of West 100th Avenue within Tract 3 of Tract C of the Westbrook Planned Unit Development.
We have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Colley?
I'm second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, Council? No? So this is going to be a roll call?
DeCamara?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
We have six yes and one member of Council not present. Okay. Do I have a motion on Items 10D to adopt Resolution Number 18? Counselor Demont?
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution Number 18, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign an Intergovernmental Agreement with Adams County in substantially the same form as the agreement provided to the Council for participation in the Home Investment Partnership Program for three years from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Colley?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from Council? No? This is going to be a roll call, Ms. Parker?
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
DeCamara?
Yes.
We have six yeses and one member of Council not present. So we're going to move to Item 10E1. Do I have a motion, Counselor Demont?
I move to authorize the reallocation of $72,467 from the Water Parket Repair and Replacement Capital Improvement Account to the Water Sewer Rate and Tap Fee Study Project Account.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Colley?
I second.
And this is, do we have any comments on this from the members of Council? This is going to be a vote with your button? Okay, we have six yeses and one member of Council not present. Okay, we're going to move to Item 10E2. Do I have a, do I have a motion? Counselor Sykes?
I move to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract amendment with Raftellus Financial Consultants in the amount of $20,425 and authorize a contingency in the amount of $2,042 for a total increase of $22,467, increasing the total authorized expenditure amount with this firm from $395,972 to $418,439.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on behalf of Council? This is going to be a vote with your button? Okay, we have six in favor and one member of Council not present. Okay, we're going to move to Items 10E3. Do I have a motion? Counselor Colley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I move to authorize the City Manager to amend the contract and expend up to an additional $50,000 with Raftellus Financial Consultants on an as-needed basis, increasing the total authorized expenditure amount with this firm from $418,439 to $468,439 if needed.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Counselor Sykes? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on behalf of Council? No, this is going to be a vote with your button? Okay, we have six in favor and one member of Council not present. Okay, we're going to move to Item 10F1. Do I have a motion? Counselor Sykes?
Thank you. I move to authorize the City Manager to sign a change order with Martin Marietta Materials, Inc. in the amount of $362,811 plus a 20% project contingency of $72,562 to cover unanticipated project costs for a total of $435,373 for asphalt paving, paving rather, for the construction of a temporary parking lot on Block A3 of downtown Westminster, increasing the total authorized 2018 expenditure with Martin Marietta Materials, Inc. to $3,553,403. $3,118,030, 2018 Asphalt Pavement Rehabilitation Project plus $435,373 for temporary parking lot for Block A3 of downtown Westminster.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a, and I have a second. Are there any comments on behalf of Council? This is going to be a vote with your button? Okay, we have six in favor. One member of Council not present. Items 10F2, do I have a motion? Counselor Bird?
I move to authorize the City Manager to sign a change order with Silva Construction, Inc. in the amount of $137,810 plus a 20% project contingency of $27,562 to cover unanticipated project costs for a total of $165,372 for the construction of concrete sidewalk, curb, gutter, and a storm scepter or water quality manhole for the temporary parking lot on Block A3 of downtown Westminster, increasing the total authorized 2018 expenditure with Silva Construction, Inc. to $1,993,443, $1,828,71, 2018 Concrete Replacement Projects plus $165,372 for concrete work for temporary parking lot for Block A3 downtown Westminster.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Sykes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on behalf of Council? No, so this is going to be a vote with your button? So we have six in favor and one member of Council not present. So this concludes our City Council meeting. We were supposed to have a post-meeting, but we took care of that before the Council meeting. So have a great night, everybody.
We, we got to congratulate Mayor Protem, DeCamara, for running the most efficient meeting ever.